Hello?
Hello, so it's past 5:30 so we can open the hearing of the zoning board appeals. My name is David Bloomberg and I'm joined by Sarah Northrup, Maureen Scanlon, Elizabeth Silver, and Bob Riddle as board members, and Carolyn Mitchell here from the Office of Planning and Sustainability providing support and assistance. We have three items on the agenda for tonight. Notice of this hearing was published May 9th, May 16th, and May 16th, 2019. I'll start by asking, is there anyone here from the public who wanted to address the board about something other than any of the three applications that are on the agenda for tonight? In other words, general public comment. Seeing none, I'll move on. And I'll ask for each application. We'll start by having the applicant or the representative of the applicant just come up to the podium and introduce yourself by name and address, and then give us a brief summary of your application. The board will have a chance to ask questions, and then after the board has had an opportunity to ask questions, then we might have members of the public will have an opportunity to address the application. And again, I ask each person who speaks to come up to the podium and introduce yourself by name and address for the record that we're keeping. And I ask that all questions and statements be addressed to the board, not to each other or to the applicant. So the first item on the agenda is a request for a commercial finding by Cosmic Cab relating to the property at 23 Hooker Avenue, North Hampton, MAP ID 24D-125. And this is familiar, but I'll let the representative of the applicant come up and address us, please.
Hi, I'm Jeffrey Miller, 241 Hayville Road, Leeds, Massachusetts. I'm owner of Cosmic Cab. We had a temporary permit in place since all April of this year, asking for it to be a permit in this case. Parking for... was under the conditions of the original or temporary permit was for three vehicles overnight. I'm actually asking for four. I also now have another parking agreement with the commercial parking in town for two vehicles. So I'm hoping for four, not just to park them there because right now I wouldn't even be parking... probably be one for the short term. It's just that in the case that things change or if I have to park them there, I don't want to feel like I'm operating out of the constraints of the permit. Also, asking for one unregistered vehicle. Being the taxi company, I found it almost impossible to operate without having at least one vehicle because if I have one break down, sometimes I take it off the road until I can fix it or figure out what to do with it. And it just makes sense that that would be allowed. Otherwise, everything else, believe... additional cab, three, four, nine. Oh yeah, and the one additional operating out of sight is just because I need that for my... to fulfill my obligation for license permit through the city council. So if they see that you've only allowed five, then I'm limited to five cabs. So that doesn't mean that six cabs will ever even be there, it just means that I need to have that. Because if I'm operating out of that space, they're requiring me to have full compliance. So that would mean if I wanted to add a cab, I would need also to have, you know, six cabs operating, which was the same with the five cabs operating, but with three parked. But now I would be asking for six operating with four parked. And like I said, not to say that those would park, I have an agreement here with the North Hampton Market for two parking spots. And I'm also looking for more parking spots that I can at least, you know, to alleviate the stress and the traffic concern congestion on other.
So just to review from a year ago, the conditions of the approval were, one, that it would expire April 30th, 2019; two, that no more than five cabs operated at the site, and you're asking that to be increased to six?
Yes.
Three, that no more than three cabs shall be stored overnight on the property, and you're asking that to be increased to four? Four, that off-street parking shall be at least five feet from the street and no more than two vehicles shall be in the 10-foot front setback, no change there. Five, there shall be no on-street employee or cab parking. Six, there shall be no idling of employee or cab vehicles. Seven, vehicles shall not be parked so as to block private residential driveways. Eight, vehicle turnaround should be done using the site driveway. Nine, no car maintenance is allowed between 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. And ten, all unregistered vehicles shall be removed by September 1, 2018. And you want that to change to allow one unregistered vehicle on the premises?
Yes.
Okay, I'm doing this, one, as a reminder to everyone who might be here, including the board, but, two, so we're crystal clear about really the expansions that you're requesting to the conditions that were approved a year ago. So five to six cabs operating, three to four cabs stored overnight, and one unregistered vehicle instead of zero.
He's asking for two. Plan to use indicates that he's requesting two unregistered vehicles.
Oh, is it one or two?
Only one. Oh, two, did I put two there?
Yeah, they don't have to say.
No, I would just be asking for one.
Okay, so you are requesting one?
Yes.
And I understand from our notes that at least the building department and the Office of Planning and Sustainability has not received any complaints filed since this was approved, I said a year ago, but last August.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions from the board members?
Hi, I would like to hear about the unregistered car. Are the condition that the unregistered cars be removed, was there any follow-up on that? Any attempt on that?
Of course, yeah. No, I had removed the vehicles, but then, you know, of course, like, our vehicles are constantly running, and then I had one break down, and it's, you know, it's expensive for me to just scrap it and then have to buy another vehicle. I'm trying to use what I have here, so if I, you know, if it's out for a month or two, it doesn't mean it's gone, it just means, you know, and if I have to get rid of it, that's just a lot more an expense for me because then I have to go source another vehicle, whereas I could just use that vehicle.
I'd like to clarify that when it says no, the current or the condition from last year, about no more than three cabs stored overnight, that's outdoors on the property.
Right.
Because they could park a vehicle inside in the workshop overnight.
So is your request to it? Yeah, I think, yeah.
Yes, that's okay.
So is your request for an increase from three to four vehicles to be stored overnight?
I could store it inside, it means if that's a part of the condition, that's fine.
Well, I think you could already do it inside.
Yeah.
As long as there are no more than three outside.
Oh, okay.
And if that's agreeable, I don't think we even have to make a change there. Am I interpreting that correctly?
Correct.
The only thing that I would ask is because of, like I said, my, you know, obligations with city council for my permits for each individual taxi and my business permit, operator's permit, they need to see that I'm in compliance at this address with the amount, any amount of cabs that I would have.
How much room do you have to put vehicles indoors on your property?
How much room?
Yeah, I mean, how many, are there bay, garage bays?
Probably about the size. You could probably put three vehicles in.
Okay.
That means I'd say it's about...
Okay, so it seems like compliance shouldn't be an issue even when the limit of three stored outdoors, if there's plenty of room indoors?
Yes.
Okay.
There's eight stored outdoors here in East Hooker Avenue.
Those are all, those are taken before...
Yeah, but there's room for eight.
Oh, yeah. I mean, there's plenty of room there.
And they can turn around.
Oh, we're talking about a limit of three outdoors overnight.
Right.
Which, and I think what I'm hearing is that maybe doesn't have to change. I'm seeing if we can narrow this down at all.
Doesn't have to change. If that's all right to park indoors, then I wouldn't have an issue. The only issue I would have is the first line, no more than five cabs operating at the site. That limits me to, you know, I don't know if there's any way to circumvent that as far as city council, because even if I had eight cabs, there's, because it says five cabs operating inside and I have to be in full compliance.
Well, that one, that's a separate item, and I realize you're asking to increase that one to six.
Yes.
Okay, and before we get to that one, Elizabeth, you had a question?
Well, I just don't recall that the three cabs stored overnight, that the word "outside" was part of that.
I didn't see it, the word in there.
So, but what I was hearing you say, David, was that if there was one inside, there's three outside, and that's still meaning this?
Well, that was based on Carolyn's recommendation.
I don't, I didn't recall our making that discussion.
Yeah, it's, I think, so typically, the ordinance is concerned about sort of that exterior appearance. This case, so I think typically, outside storage is the issue that needs to be minimized or screened. In this case, I would agree with you, it's, there are a lot of other issues about the number of people and vehicles traveling to and from the site. So I couldn't say 100% sure that it wasn't in all cases, not more than the three vehicles on the site. But I also don't recall, though, at the time, whether there were other things going on inside the building that I think limited space or next to the building, so I don't, I don't know if that was, I don't recall if it was part of our discussion.
I'm curious about our original condition, number four, how does that impact it? Off-street parking shall be at least five feet from the street and no more than two vehicles shall be in the 10-foot front setback. Would the addition of another car, would it still permit you to be in that compliance effect?
Yeah, because we could park in the back and on the side, there's...
Okay, so we could still maintain that condition?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Without needing to...
Yeah, no, that wouldn't change anyway because we, I don't want to congest that area for our purposes, not just for...
And that would be a violation of something if they didn't comply with that, okay, anyways?
I would like just to know that there's normally one or two other vehicles there that aren't cab company, there's like a boat parked out back and another vehicle from some other business that rents that apartment building.
Let's say, oh, that is being moved this summer.
Oh, that other business?
Well, boat and the other vehicles back there.
But they aren't part of your operations?
I may have some questions here that I'd like to hear, is there any comments?
From the neighbors?
Or anybody who needs to hear if there's any issues coming on?
Yeah, are there neighbors here from that, because familiar faces? And so we may well come back to you, sir, but...
I didn't make copies, but did you want to see the lease agreement for the parking basis?
I don't think so, but those are leases for off-site, obviously off-site.
For off-site, yes.
But it doesn't change, I think all we're concerned with is what you're asking for. Well, one, whether it can be extended, but two...
Well, I'm curious, how many cars is that for, the off-site?
Two, two vehicles.
But it doesn't change what he's asking to do here. Curious, okay. Would anyone else like to address the board about this applicant? Yes, sir?
My name's Justin Kent, 21 Hooker Avenue, so we're right next, so we're the closest neighbors, we share a property line really close together. We feel that all of the kind of stipulations that we came up with, this is the last meeting we had last year, worked out very well. I feel like the number of cabs and the way that we've made it, gotten people off the street parking and just tried to make things tidy up a little bit has been helpful and it doesn't really bother us that they're there and operating out of their way there now.
When you say "us," other than yourself?
Speaking for myself and my wife, actually.
Okay, and you live right next to them?
And I guess I've chatted with other neighbors, just to find, I don't think anyone else is here tonight, but...
So the fact that no complaints, I mean, the whole, the biggest reason, frankly, we had this six-month temporary, the temporary permit was as kind of a trial period, not only for the applicant, but for the neighbors to have the opportunity to come back and let us know. And so I guess I'm encouraged by the fact that no, that the fact that no complaints were filed with the city was not a fluke, it seems like there has been an improvement.
Yeah, that's true.
Do you have a reaction to the proposed increase in the number of cars?
Not necessarily. I guess, I, it's hard, I think what Jeff was saying that is that he, like, it never, it's always kind of moving around, so it doesn't ever seem like there's consistently anything happening, it's always random. And so I can't imagine it would be a problem. I guess it would be nice if the residents had, knew that we could bring up an issue with somebody if one came up, but, I mean, in this case, I would probably, there was, I just talked to Jeff about it, but an increase of one vehicle doesn't seem to be a problem, but I guess we'd have to say, I don't know if it's like one and then maybe a couple more, it might be a problem after that, but...
Well, it's two, it's not one, it's two. What would be unregistered?
Like I said, if they park unregistered vehicles back behind the building, it would be the same from where we're at. And there are, there is another business operating out of the, or there's another people, other people operating out of the building, but they're not there consistently. They'd be parked there.
Thank you.
Questions?
Thoughts?
My only, my only thought is that, you know, this is, it's not an unsubstantial increase, and it would have been one thing to go ahead with a permanent permit as was, but what we're agreeing to, you know, if we do this on a permanent basis is as was plus, and I don't, and we haven't really had an opportunity to see whether or not that would make a difference. That's my only thought.
I assume we have the authority to do, or do we have to do another one year at the increased level?
Sure.
We can do that if we wanted to, because I hate to make the applicant keep coming in, but I don't know if that addresses, if that would address the concern some board members might have, the fact that, well, this worked out, but now we're expanding.
I mean, it would, but it also sounds like the neighbors don't have any problem with it, so I don't want to be the person responsible for saying no or making the mutation. But to that board, might the boarders not be aware that this request for additional increased use?
On one hand, they would have received no, if they read it.
They received notice. We don't send the applications out, but we, there's information about where you can find the application. So there's no way to know how many people actually looked at the application.
It would be a fair assumption that they would assume that the application was consistent with the conditions we set last year.
Yeah, and I probably, if I weren't able to assume when I got that notice, oh, they're just renewing it, but they could have checked, but not everybody does. Well, are people able to make a decision? I, excuse, I think the applicant was...
Yeah, I'd just like to respond to that. You know, we're a community-based business, we do our best to work with the community, and I've gotten to know the neighbors on the street, and, you know, I've done our best, we've done our best at Cosmic Cab to alleviate any traffic concerns, and that would just continue even with an extra vehicle. Like I said, I'm looking to offset some of the parking anyway, so I'm looking to get more vehicles away from there. As it is now, there'll only be one taxi coming and going for the, you know, the immediate short term, and then hopefully I'll be able to alleviate any traffic at that because I'll be parking everything in more, you know, accessible spots around the city where I can find commercial parking. And then just using that for maintenance and, you know, for storage and maintenance.
Right, thanks. Carolyn, just to remind you, does the application run in favor of the applicant or with the land, so to speak? In other words, it sounds like the applicant has been very responsive and conscientious. If, for example, he sold the business to another owner who took over the operation of the business who wasn't as responsive, obviously they'd have to comply with the, with the conditions, but that owner could step into the shoes and get the benefit, that owner does not have to come back here for a whole new permit.
Right, goes with the property.
Goes with the property. Just want people to be clear about that.
But as you said, the conditions apply if the vehicle is operating.
Yeah, right. I just, I think there might be some confidence on the part of the neighbors that this applicant has shown good sensitivity and, you know, neighborly conscientious efforts, but I'm just curious about that point. Any other questions or...
I wonder if the, that distinguish, distinction between indoor and outdoor parking might be helpful, because if the zoning and outward effects of the business, is concerned mostly with the outward effects of the business if he's got, say, the, he's asking for having an unregistered vehicle parked, if he's just, if he just puts it inside, if he's got room inside, then it's not causing an outward increase.
Right, I think Carolyn's comment on that was, normally zoning, we're concerned with exterior impact, but it's also a legitimate consideration in terms of just the overall impact on the site in a sensitive residential neighborhood. So that it doesn't mean we can't take into account the added intensity of use by virtue of having vehicles indoors, right? Is that a fair description? Anything else or any other information needed from the applicant before we move to closed public hearing?
I want to close the public hearing.
Okay, second. All in favor? It's unanimous? And I guess just a motion on the request for the permit? Actually, it's a commercial finding, it's technically, or the commercial finding. Move to...
Not really. I think that if you're willing to talk a little bit, it's complex.
It is, okay, so...
Do you have this, Elizabeth? Give me that.
I have this and this, which are the last conditions. I don't have the...
Just to identify the motion.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so I move that we approve the application for commercial finding for Cosmic Cab at 23 Hooker Ave., MAP ID 24D-125, with the following conditions, and please don't hesitate to interrupt with friendly amendments. It will be the same conditions as in the prior permit, except it will be, instead of no more than five cabs operating at the site, there'll be no more than six cabs operating at the site. And then instead of no more than three cabs parking overnight, there'll be no more than four cabs parking overnight. And then instead of no unregistered vehicles related to cab business allowed on site, it will allow one unregistered vehicle on site. And, what is it? We need to adjust this for overnight, right?
Who did?
Well, is parking and storage the same thing?
Well, I think, well, one says, under the staff report, it says "stored," and under plan to use, it says "parking." So if it's parking, then we can, let's go with parking.
Yeah.
And we'll look at cabs parking. So it'll be four cabs.
Four cabs, parking.
And then the one additional one would be that the unregistered vehicle would be stored inside.
Did you want to talk about term, a limited term?
I don't feel the need to.
Yeah, I don't feel the need either. I think the applicant has really shown good effort, and I don't feel the need to make the applicant keep coming back, you know, it makes it hard to run a business and plan for the future.
Okay, second.
Second. All in favor? It ends? Okay, thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
The second item on the agenda, we're 12 minutes, 13 minutes behind schedule, is the request for a commercial finding for a non-conforming buffer and special permit for higher than a foot fence by ERNR Cooper Partnership at 3 Main Street Florence, MAP ID 23A-85. We would have no board member sitting if everyone had to recuse themselves who did not eat at Coopers or other, but Elizabeth is going to accuse herself.
Do I need to leave the room or can I just sit? Because I'm coming back, right? For the last one.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to the board. Technically, you're supposed to leave the room.
You're supposed to go outside. Yeah, you can sit outside on the bench and come in, can't you?
Or you can put your back to the floor.
So representative of the applicant?
Yes, hi. Carolyn, is that projector available?
Oh.
That's okay.
Yeah.
I can do a little preamble while the technology comes over here, and I think the previous applicant was already out, so. While we wait for the electrons, I'll just introduce myself and who's with me tonight. My name is Becky Sparkle. I am the civil engineer for the project, with this engineer. I am also here with Peter Pinkler from Johnson and Pinkler, and the applicants, Richard Cooper and Kathy Kay. And, no, that's okay. So in essence, what we're hoping to do is at the address of 3 Main Street Florence, and I'm not in the way of...
No, no, no.
And this is the site of the former FJ Rogers Bike Shop. That building has been abandoned for a little while, it was been purchased by ERNR Cooper Partnership. The intention is to remove the building and in its place install a parking lot that would be for the sole use of staff or Coopers corner. So this would not be a public parking, it wouldn't be for people who are shopping at the store, it would be posted as private parking 24 hours. The site is one tenth of an acre, it's zoned general business. To the east and west, it's also a business zone to the north, it does a bit residential URB zoning. So there are a few situations that bring us here to the ZBA instead of, say, the planning board, which is the building department. One of the main issues we have is the bylaw that normally requires between a business and residential zoning to be a 30-foot buffer. That does not exist currently, it is a few inches to, the greatest is about 1.8 feet, I think, where the building comes right up against the back lot line. So providing a 30-foot buffer on a 100-foot deep lot is not reasonable, it's pre-existing non-conforming situation anyway. Additionally, so what we're hoping to do there is, once we get some of the visuals up, you'll see that there are a couple of garages, so there's a little section where there's a visual connection between the residential property and what would be the parking lot. So we're looking to install a six-foot privacy fence in that space. To the east, though, it's zoned business, is a residence, and we've been in communication with the residence?
Excuse me, sorry.
That's okay.
All right.
Um, and for a few reasons, they've actually requested that instead of standard privacy fence, that we install a ten-foot tall privacy fence, which is taller than the eight-foot that would normally be allowed by right. So we're looking for a special permit for that. And, uh, they're, they want to see the parking lot, and also there is currently, there's the old FJ Rogers building is now being used as a trellis for vegetation that's growing there. Some of that, uh, the residents don't want anymore, but some of it they do want to keep. So, uh, they're, they're looking for another large massive structure, actually, to kind of replace the wall that they're about to lose when the building goes away. And, uh, uh, the owners are, and I think they're amenable to this, they're, they're willing to do it, but of course it requires, since we're here anyway, we may as well make that request.
Thanks.
Couple other things I'll mention.
Sorry.
That's it. Um, presently, the site is almost entirely impervious area, there's just a couple hundred square feet of greenbelt to the side, so it's ninety-two percent impervious, there's no stormwater management, uh, systems whatsoever, it just drains off, uh, over to David Murphy's property to the west. And, uh, we're looking to remedy that as well, since we have an opportunity to take out the building, we're looking to install a catch basin on site that would have an inlet filter, uh, which would remove the toll suspended solids, it's in the turbidity, we'd be well exceeding, uh, the stormwater management standards with, with that little system. We would then move to a drywall, uh, on site, we've got pretty same soils in that part of the world, so instead of letting water just run off, as it does right now, to the west of David Murphy's, into the city right away, there's a catch basin right in front of the, the street, or right in front of the building. Uh, we want to basically keep all of that on site, so we're able to capture all of the stormwater, so this is going to be a benefit to the neighbors, uh, as well as the municipal system. You know, my presentations were on my nose for my, I'm trying to.
Go now.
Uh, but I, I have looked at this plan for, you know, a couple of hours, so it's coming back. They are looking for ten parking spaces. Um, they're all above the minimum, and, uh, let's see what other some people, we're going to be using the existing curb cut, there's currently a curb cut, and a parking space on site. So we're just going to leave that in place, extend a little driveway off of that and into the, the private parking area. The front of the property is being the street side, as landscape buffer is being installed. Currently, it's just brick and concrete, uh, while not necessarily, not attractive, it's going to look a lot nicer, uh, when, uh, Dotson and Pinkler is done with it, and we do have their plan, and if we get a chance to have Peter talk about it, or if you're interested in those details, he can talk to you about that. But consideration has been given in the planning plan to make sure that the vegetation does not impinge, uh, the driver's view of the street, so we're not impinging sight distance issues, we can see the pedestrians coming, um, we're going to add a tree up front where there isn't a tree, uh, as well as rhododendrons and a few other attractive plants. The east side of the property is going to be a mulch line, there's going to be just a little bit of grass around the perimeter on the north from the west. And... That's the essence of the application, a thousand words.
So the only issues before us are the need to make a determination. This is basically a pre-existing nonconformity?
For the buffer.
For the buffer. We have the buffer, and we have the fence.
And the fence.
Those are the only two things that would be.
That's, that's essentially, yes.
And, and, and the buffer is a pre-existing nonconformity, and in that respect, you are reducing the nonconformity?
That's true, the, right now, it's 1.8 feet between the building right now and the lot line. We're providing, it's still narrow, it's two and a half feet, but it is wider by about a foot, in terms of we're going to install a greenbelt there, but also a privacy fence as, to sort of meet the spirit of the buffers requirement.
Right. And the standard there is whether the change is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood?
Mm-hmm.
Right now, there's no buffer.
There's just a big old line right there.
And, and that's which sides?
So, uh, the, the connection between the residential side?
Right, there's three abutters, right?
There are three abutters, so, picture in a thousand words. So the, the, to the north is the residential district, and there's a garage, so if we have the lot line, the garage takes up, on the neighbor's garage, takes up about half of that space, another neighbor's garage is on the side, so there's just this little L section, uh, which is, most of that L is, is along the residential side. Uh, I'm not sure I can tell you the dimension off the top of my head, it's maybe twenty feet, uh, of fencing.
So it's not conforming in all, on all sides, but differently?
Yeah, the, the building is built up to, within inches of the lot line everywhere except for the front, uh, it's about eleven or twelve feet off the lot line, or maybe it's a sidewalk, um, there's just a little bit of brick, but yeah, to the, to all the abutters sides, it's, it's a wall, right up, right up to the lot line. Of course, general business, there are no side setbacks or setbacks, but, uh, so we're gonna, we're gonna get rid of a large mass of blocky building and, uh, put up some trees, some landscaping, and, uh, have a much lower, a lower vista.
And it sounds like you're improving the drainage.
Way a bit. We're going from nothing useful to something that meets full stormwater standards.
Which is no, no runoff off-site at all?
Actually, for storms, for the two-year storm, if you're familiar with storm design, uh, there, there won't be any runoff from the site whatsoever. We're, we're getting to the ten-year storm, and even if that, the discharge is still only ten percent of what's coming off now.
Is it an increase of impervious surface?
We're actually reducing the impervious surface, it's just there's no control now.
Right.
So a simple filter and even a, a modest sized drywall on, on such a tiny block made a huge difference to what's running off the site.
Right.
Right. Sorry, there's some problems with the software. I reboot it, but I did, did you get DPW comments that I told you?
I got no, oh.
It was just afternoon, it was late.
Okay.
Um, I, there are. DPW comments here, if you want to.
She never fails.
And then, I can put, yeah, I think.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's okay. I should have grabbed it before the meeting started.
Yeah.
Sorry.
There's a problem with the battery too, so.
Oh, geez.
Ten foot high there.
Really assume it's going to work, just like that?
I mean, I, I didn't bring an easel, I, I do have plans, I was planning to do it.
They have plans, yeah.
And I'm drawing drawings in the air.
Right.
Some, some projects we couldn't hold out off, we shouldn't, we really shouldn't have had a conversation that can't be heard under open.
Thank you.
Sorry. Um, and hopefully if we get the visuals, if necessary, I suppose we can, we can ask to, for an explanation, if you have a question about the plant. Do you have a specific question about the plant?
Yes, we were.
Yeah. While we're doing that, maybe I should read the comments from DPW, because I don't think you've even heard.
Please, no, I have, I have not, I have not, I did.
Suspense here.
I sat down with the, the stormwater management people before, but let's see what they came up with.
Um, the contractor shall coordinate with the water, first of all, under the topic of demolition.
Okay.
The contractor shall coordinate with the water and sewer departments regarding abandonment procedures for cutting and capping existing services. And then Main Street, I'll just read this, Main Street is under a five-year pavement cut moratorium.
Oh, okay.
Through the 2019 construction season.
If you have PowerPoint on this software, then do that, otherwise, God knows what'll happen. I'm sorry, so there's, uh, you, we can't cut in the pavement until next year?
Well, it says, it's under a five-year pavement cut moratorium through 29 construction season, any trenching, here we go, any trenching in the street this year will require a mill and overlay the full width of the street, twenty feet beyond the trench limits, in all directions.
Right, that's, that's significant for what we're trying to do, maybe we can figure out how to do a cut and cap, um, on, at the property line, that would satisfy the DPW, uh, even if we're just consider temporary until spring of next year, if we need to come all the way up to the water main, and, because normally you go, if you can, you go right to the water main and shut the service off right there, uh, and abandon that port. But we don't need the water, uh, so as long as we can make a positive, you know, it's not, if it's not leaking now, it's not going to leak later, so I can, I can talk to the DPW and see if we can figure something out that doesn't require us re-milling and repaving, uh, the entire width of, of, uh, Main Street.
Yeah, that's.
Just for a slightly better disconnect that we can provide at the lot line.
Right. We'll come back to the overall procedural issue with DPW, but let me just read you the, there are five more bullet points on the DPW comments. The existing curb cut is approximately twelve feet wide, are there any concerns with vehicle conflicts entering and exiting the lot? I'll just move on. The proposed drive aisle behind the sidewalk is an angled design that leaves a small trapezoid next to the property line, that appears to be existing bituminous concrete. Why is an angled approach proposed as, as to a straight design? The applicant should consider maintaining the existing continuity of pavement with the adjoining drive property. And then, third point, any damage to the existing concrete curb cut and or sidewalk shall be repaired in kind. That was under the heading of driveway. The next one point, under details, it is recommended that the vertical clearance of the private parking sign, which is on sheet four, detail seven, be increased to seven feet to meet MUTCD standards. And then last point, under stormwater, the proposed stormwater system requires routine inspection and maintenance, so they want to so me a, a site-specific stormwater. The applicant must submit a site-specific stormwater operation maintenance plan for the proposed stormwater system to the DPW for review and approval. The approved plan must be recorded in the land records with the planning board decision. So you're also going to planning board?
No.
No, so, well, whatever, they, they meant zone and board decision. So Carolyn, um, procedurally, before we get to the presentation and further discussion, these DPW comments, just I'm holding them, um, is that something where we can simply make as a condition that the applicant will resolve comments and questions with DPW to DPW satisfaction, or do we need to address more specifically those concerns with conditions?
So, um, I think that you would need, if you feel it's appropriate, and I think in some instances it, it would be, you need to make a condition as opposed to saying, go resolve this with DPW. There's certain items that have to be resolved anyway, so the way that they tie in or cap the water line, for example, is one of them, that doesn't need to be a condition. Um, so, um, I don't think, you know, for demolition, um, you don't need to condition that they coordinate with DPW about that. But, um, the, um, the one that I would say would be, um, you know, damage to existing curb cut or sidewalk should be repaired in kind, um, could be.
Yeah, makes sense, as a.
Yeah, and then as, as well, um, that, um, that they meet the MUTCD standards for parking, and also seminal of a stormwater inspection.
Yes, okay. Um, what about this, this business about milling?
Um, that is something.
The entire width of the street?
That's, that's a DPW city standard, so there's nothing that you can do to say you don't have to meet that, or, on the other hand, you don't need to condition that because it is what it is.
It's a standard that has to be satisfied.
Everybody has to, everybody who wants to do anything in a street has been.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
So maybe we can not get into the street.
Exactly. You might be able to figure out another way to deal with it, but there's nothing the board can do to say, to waive the five-year moratorium.
I don't believe so.
Was the day of these DPW comments?
They came in today.
Okay.
Day of May 20th, but they came, right, maybe.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry, why don't we go back to, uh, this?
Yeah, I've kind of given a, a lot of the, the content of the, the presentation, we do have, um, a point about a trapezoidal, uh, access, um, I don't know if this will work.
That's not going to work.
It doesn't work, uh, some of these screens are reflective, those are not, okay, yeah. So, um, and I don't have a cursor here, so.
I, I unplugged that mouse, but you can plug it back in, just because I had to put your USB in.
Okay. Does the mouse show up? The mouse shows up, okay. So, um, the trapezoidal area, the reason I came in a bit of an angle is because the, the existing curbs don't, uh, don't quite line up the lot line, uh, so I was making sure that we kept our access, you know, on, on the pave, or on the, on our property, so, and as well as not extend the impervious area unnecessarily. However, it is not a big deal for us to scooch it over, I can get it really close to ninety degrees, it might be eighty-seven and a half degrees or something like that, from a driver's perspective, it will effectively be a perpendicular intersection. Uh, with a twelve-foot, uh, pathway, driveway, it is effectively a one-way, so you, you don't need twelve feet to get a car, uh, in and out of there, so drivers would have no difficulty coming in perpendicular to the intersection when they're, they're departing, coming into traffic, so there's plenty of pavement for them to get that, the car straight. So there aren't any impediments along those lines.
Where is the tree in relation to that, um, trapezoidal area?
The proposed, okay, so the next, this is the landscape plan, let's see if I can get the mouse to come back alive, so the larger circle here, does that show up over there? That is a sweet gum tree, and then the plantings are all in this section, uh, that.
But the trees that you're protecting, where are they in relationship?
The trees that are being protected, okay, are the purple, sort of purple circles, this mouse keeps disappearing after, so, very good. Uh, so there is one tree to the east that is on the abutters property, uh, we're going to do tree protection around that, and to the west, there are two trees that are adjacent, uh, Maple and the Locust, I believe, uh, that are right on the lot line, but more prominently on, on David Murphy's property, uh, so that's also going to get, uh, the, the planks and the tree wrap strapping around this, down around the root zone as well.
So you wouldn't have any objection to a condition requiring, uh, that the tree protection be inspected and approved by the city?
It's going to be right on a main street.
Yeah. Did you, did you have, have a question about spec or something you saw on the plan?
A question had to do with where the ten-foot and other height fences were.
Okay. Great, so this plan, this plan I showed a little more easily, screens are never as big as you want them to be. Um, so that six-foot fence is along the back lot line, so you can see the existing garage that is going to provide quite a large visual buffer, the residence is back here, and that, I don't think I did that, uh, postpone, how's that sound? Not in ten minutes, oh wait a minute, four hours, postpone.
Get the next guy.
Oh my gosh, okay, great. Um, so, uh, the mouse has gone away. So, uh, the residence is in the back, uh, and this is the gap between the two garages that we're going to do the six-foot fence. Uh, and then essentially starting at the front of the garage here, along the eastern lot line, we're going to come down and extend the ten-foot fence mimicking the existing wall until an existing hedge line, there's really, a really hip, you know, the site, I can go back to the pictures, but there's a lovely hedge, it's hard to let you walk through, so we're going to bring, we're going to bring the fencing down to that point, uh, so the neighbor has a, kind of has the mass that they're, they've been counting on, so the long, the ten-foot one runs along, uh, this line here.
Is it exactly on the line, or just over onto the, uh, abutters property you're essentially giving it to?
Actually, uh, there was some intention to do that, but because of the root system of the existing vegetation, the proposed fence is going to be, I think, just like four inches onto Cooper's property. Uh, yeah, okay, thank you.
And on the west side?
On the west side is just going to be open. It's, it's already parking, uh, there's already pavement, driveway, and, and parking right there, so there's no, it's business to business over there.
Any other questions before we ask the public for?
Well, one of the DPW comments was about, um, stormwater maintenance?
Yeah, operation.
They require the applicant to submit a great stormwater maintenance screen.
So, does that mean DPW hasn't seen this, dated April 16th, including the maintenance plan, stormwater collection?
No, what they're saying is it needs to go on record.
Yeah, agreement.
At, at agreement with the city, based on what was submitted, so, um, they would have made comments about the, that, but they're just saying that basically needs to be recorded.
Okay, so the, uh, the plan itself doesn't have to be a hundred-page report?
Okay.
It can be, uh, one or two pages.
Right, or a couple pair, as long as it covers what their, um, maintenance requirements are, this is.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
They're rudimentary.
Yeah.
Anything else? We can come back to the application. Is there anyone here from the public who wanted to, yes, sir, in the back?
I'm Bruce Dufrane. I live at One Main Street. And me and my partner Dave, with Rich, have agreed that we would like to have the 10-foot fence. We've got plantings all along, you know, which some we can save, we want to save, others we'll just have to let go. We have the hollies that we want to save. And we built a trellis in a matter of being prepared when it's demolition time. And the entire project, our concern is that's our only private area. Without a fence there, we're surrounded by pavement. We're out in the open. We will have no private area, so fence is very important. And height is important, too. And looking at, one more thing that we want to request is not to terminate at the edge of our garage, but at least a certain distance behind the garage where we have a chimney. Because we spend most of our time out in the garage, which is really a recreation area. We're out there with company, we're out there all winter long. And that would leave, that opening would just prevent us from using that space. If we use that, that space between what would be the, what is now the wall and the chimney and our place, it's about that wide, we store a lot of hostas and plants in that area in the winter, and then when you go around the backside and come in, we use that whole area for storing all kinds of metalwork with our garden. So we would be losing all that space behind our garage that we use if there wasn't a fence there. And I think the whole project would look much better if there was a continuous fence from the parking lot side, rather than stopping for a garage and starting again and go. And I cannot speak for our backside neighbor how they would want their fence.
Are they, they're not here?
No, it's one elderly woman and a son who lives not with her, but close by. And exactly what they would want, I don't know. So I can't, I can't suggest anything for what they would want. But if, but if the 10-foot high fence could continue at least to our chimney and then from there go down to six, six feet, then we would be happy with that. And also in the front part where we have the hedges, in discussing that with Rich Cooper, we thought the fence would extend a few feet further towards the street, rather than terminating at the hedges.
With a swoop down, though. It can swoop that way.
And, do you think anyone to say that I might have missed, Dave?
Well, my name is Dave Mallon. I also live at One Main. I'm the abutter. Like Bruce said, we're the ones, you know, we actually requested and have spoken with Rich and, and we've actually worked, you know, been working together and Rich has been very nice. And we spoke about, I mean, I don't know if this, if this is a variance just for a 10-foot fence, which is fine, or if this is a final plan. Is this what's proposed and what would be done, or is that, that's another thing?
Yeah, I'll let the applicant respond, but, but I think the fence, the only matters before us are the fence and the buffer. Although we, we will take into account the entire plan to the extent we need to, to make our determination about compliance with the ordinance, both the finding on the buffer and the permit for the fence. So, I mean, it's kind of all on the table, but I don't know if, if you have no other comments, maybe we'll see if the applicant is able to respond. Because I, because I understand you're, you're now raising, at least with the extension of the fence, something that's not presently in the plan and maybe hasn't been communicated before to the applicant.
Well, I'm mentioning it now because not knowing if all we want now is to approve a 10-foot fence, then what a lot of what I'm saying is not necessary. But I still would like to mention it because I'm saying we would like it to be a little longer than what is on the plans, and if that makes a difference or not.
Yeah, so I think what, I think you would need to approve the additional height of the fence, and you could take into consideration whether or not it's appropriate to extend it the full length of that side of the property, but what's on the plans plus conditions become a permit. They can't be changed unless you have it.
Well, it would be good for Rich and his planners to know what, you know, we wish and how, how to work in that.
Right, and I think, so I think the question becomes, is the applicant able to decide kind of on the spot here that the requests you've made are acceptable? In which case, I think in this, during this hearing, we can hear about some slight modifications. But whatever is approved at this hearing is all that they can do. So it's good to get it out in the open, but, but it's not before us unless the applicant says, you know, yes, we can, that's something we can do. Or if the applicant says, no, we can't do that, at least not on the fly right now, the options are for us to approve as proposed or for it to be a continuance to come back again. But why don't we give them a minute to talk?
Well, you know, I just wanted to add, you know, I mean, we're in favor of the 10-foot fence.
Right.
Obviously, you know, we actually are the one that requested it. Rich has been very nice in working with us.
We'd like to be taller, but we'll-
But we didn't, but we didn't see until now that the, that the fence stops behind the garage and doesn't continue behind the garage, which is a space about this wide, and we would lose that. We lose our, that's our property.
Right.
We use that, we use that for storage and entering over the plant.
The proposed fence is on the applicant's property. The applicant will own it and have to continue to maintain it.
The property line is actually the surface of the building. That's, that's why it's a, it's a tricky situation.
Right, it would be the applicant's fence.
Yes.
In code, yeah.
Even with the extension?
Oh, yeah.
It would be on, on the applicant's property.
How do you feel about that?
Okay, well-
It's meant to be continuous down the, the L shape, dropping down to six feet after it passes by our open space.
No, no, it wouldn't, it wouldn't-
Pass our open space all the way down to the garage.
Oh, yeah, yeah, at the garage.
But it sounds like they wanted to come down.
In the front, it would just come down.
Yeah, I was going to say, would there be a sightline issue at the front where the hedges, you can't have tension going to the curve?
Exactly. That, that's what I meant. That's why it would, it would, it would only, it's only going to extend another two feet.
So what Carolyn is saying is that, under the ordinance, within five feet of the curb, it can only-
The sidewalk.
Of the sidewalk in this case, it can only be three feet high, and that's a safety issue, sightlines for vehicles coming and going. Look, you, so, so I think that's a practical concern with even a sloping fence down to the street. It's got to be no higher than three feet for five feet from the sidewalk.
Well, it'd be, be 15 feet away from the street, sidewalk, backside to sidewalk instead of coming down somehow.
Well, the last section, well, this is, I mean, we didn't know that we would have to, you know.
I don't want to say yes to this.
Be prepared to-
Or if it's not terminate, terminate the actual hedges at the front, parallel with it, that's fine, that's what we're saying.
The green area is 10 feet back from the sidewalk.
He's saying another shift going down.
Well, I mean, I'm not sure we're going to take the time here during the hearing to-
Right, it's really not part of the-
To have significant revisions to the plan. It's something where if the applicant can make a very quick decision, and I don't really want to put the applicant under pressure either, so the, so the alternative, give them one more minute and then we can talk about alternatives. I mean, this isn't really the time or the place to be modified.
We thought that, we thought that this was specifically just to allow variance for a 10-foot fence. We didn't realize, we didn't, we weren't, we didn't know that this was, that the plan was going to be, you know, like, that's the final plan.
No, I understand, and I'm not, I'm not, there are no criticisms here. It's just in terms of, we have another applicant waiting for the agenda normally. During the hearing, it's a work session.
On the Main Street side, okay. That's what I'm trying to get at, yeah.
Should I be in on this?
They're going to stop the fence at the hedge on the Main Street side.
Yeah, I think we're going to stop, so-
Do you want to take other comments?
The way the door works now.
They may want to hear it, but they don't mind. Yes, please.
You were standing at the parking lot and looking toward your-
Okay, I'm David Murphy. I'm the abutter on the west side. Oh, okay, oh, this is the parking lot. Yes, yeah, right now, the building that's there, which covers most of the site-
From the wall and all the way down, yep.
Five yards wide.
Yes. Terminating at the hedge. And aesthetically, that's going to look-
Having it-
Peter, get back.
It's okay, having to deal with some stormwater.
It's true, this area is then into the planting ground, so there's going to be-
Then after the chimney, during the chimney, you're dropping down.
Just your planting here, your planting zone is a little-
Trees, trees that are right in the park.
So you're, you don't want to be back on the screen.
Planting zone.
Okay.
Your hedges back in the-
Back in.
The side used to be a hole.
So your planting zone-
On the, where the fence ends, your planting zone begins. I don't think they adequately explain how accessible probably our-
There's still a gap.
They've been culminating against the side of the building for probably four years.
Even take the last section of fence and smooth that down.
And they trained the plant to pass the size of the building, which is why they want to be totally fenced out, because they can just put the back of the building.
That far past the hedge.
Right.
We'll make a new quarter.
And then in the back, we're-
A couple, you know.
And that little L-
Because we do have, we do have a garden.
Garage on the north side and garage on the east side.
The building extends.
Very general space, and I know you're looking about-
Past that edge, you know, and like I said, anywhere.
The woman in that house now is legally blind, so I don't know whether there is-
I know, I know.
But I think-
But I think, I mean, if-
But obviously, we'll figure out what the best way to do it. Or just really the whole- But most of, most of that site is blocked by that garage.
I just don't see the hedge.
It fixes the drainage directly.
And until I see, you know, I mean, I hadn't, I mean, if I would, you know, go and look at it.
Works. Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, if I misspeak, we have an answer.
I think, I think so. In general, it's a yes. Particularly in regards to, get the mouse to come back alive here. It, there is, there is a degree of logic. So if we started a six-foot fence back at the, where we were going to have a six-foot fence and extend that around, before we were actually going to stop along the side of the building.
Perfect.
But let's continue the six-foot fence to the chimney, move up to a 10-foot tall fence and provide a little additional screening back there. And that 10-foot fence would then continue all the way to the hedge line in the front. Boy, that mouse doesn't want to stay awake. There we go. So the 10-foot fence would then follow the property line down to the hedge. And it seems like that we can bring it another couple feet past the hedge, is that-
Yeah. Well, do you have a picture of the, the ground level being?
Uh, let's see, I've got all of our plans here.
You mean to keep, to keep the five-foot sightline from the sidewalk?
Oh, I see. That's further back, but I don't, I don't have a good shot of one there.
Now there's nothing here.
But the building does come out past the, the hedge a little bit.
Right, I saw it.
Yeah, by, by a little bit, so we could actually, I think, by six feet.
Right.
So Peter Flanker, Johnson and Flanker, 40 Main Street Florence. So we have planned, there's a tall hedge that comes right up to the wall of the building and makes, makes a sort of corner there, and then there's a gateway through the hedge. So the idea was to have the 10-foot fence come up and make that corner again. But if there's some concern that that's going to open up some visibility of the parking after we tear the building down, so I think what we just agreed is that we'll look at that again, find a way to extend the fence if we need to make a nice neat sort of corner to comply with the zoning by coming down to the three feet within five feet of the property line and sort of button that all up nicely. We don't know exactly how we're going to do that right this moment.
So for purposes of this application and an amendment to your application today, we're not even talking about that because you will do something that will not require any further.
Right, so all we need is the, the variance to get the 10-foot fence.
Yeah, so we're back to the 10-foot, with the modification that you're going to extend it at, well, six feet you can do also, right?
Right.
So really, nothing's changed in terms of our approval. Your plan has been tweaked a little bit to address the concerns of the abutter, in back anyway.
But if they're asking to take 10 feet, another panel, let's say, beyond the hedge, that would be part of your purview. If they're asking to drop it to the six and a half feet, then that would be different.
You're not asking-
But I would recommend that it wouldn't go beyond, go in front of the first parking space.
At what height?
At 10 feet, at any height.
But you're, at any height?
Because you've got a whole landscape plan that's there that's supposed to be visual.
Part of the-
Right, so I don't think it makes sense to go past the front line of that first parking space.
Which is 10 feet from the-
It's slightly more than 10 feet. Yes, it is 10 feet from the, yes.
If maybe the condition could be something along the lines of the 10-foot fence could extend as far as 10 feet from the property line, that would allow a little wiggle room for transition from the full height to either truncation or gradual step down to six feet or to three feet. But if you just approved that it could go as far, then I think that would provide what we all need here tonight and not have to be back.
And the standard, because it's pretty rare that we have a fence with a permit at a pay. What is, what is the standard for approving a fence above the allowed height, height allowed as a right?
There's not a specific standard for, for the special permit, and I think the reason is that it's case by case. What's the purpose of having a tall fence between two commercial and rezoned properties? So I think you've heard that there's, obviously there's a residential use, even though it's commercially zoned, and that there is a concern about privacy, you know, parking lot. So that would be, you could determine that a special permit was appropriate, given the circumstances. And it's certainly not precedent-setting for anything else. It's about this unique situation.
Right, because the first part of 350-6.80 is not applicable. That's, that's a fence within five feet of the front line. The second part just says, no fence will exceed the height of six and a half feet unless a special permit has been received from the zoning board. That's the extent of our guidance.
Right. I mean, there is, there are general special permit criteria.
Right, right.
But they're kind of, they're much broader for bigger factors.
Yeah, that's for larger projects, yeah. That's interesting. Okay, so it just has to feel right, I guess. So, and on the other issue, which is the buffer, it is the standard finding determiner, which is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing condition. So again, to sort of bring it back to what we have to decide, those are the two things we're thinking about. The, the buffer, which is actually a reduction of a non-conformity, coupled with other improvements to the site in terms of reduction of impervious surface, dramatic improvement to a non-existing stormwater management infrastructure, which will help the property to the west, and it will also keep all stormwater on site, as I understand it.
Yes.
So I know, I'm really comfortable with the finding standard for the buffer. Just thinking out loud here, bringing this to some kind of closure, hopefully, maybe. And on the fence, there is no specific standard that we apply, just that if approval can be granted, a higher fence can be allowed with an approval from the zoning board of appeals. And we've heard from the abutters, the immediately affected abutters, the plan has been modified slightly to address the abutter's concern in back with the extension of a six-feet, which you can do anyway, but we're kind of approving this as part of the plan presented.
And there is a transition that is over the six and a half feet, so it's-
So that would be over six and a half feet.
Yeah.
And then in front, I think our only condition would have to be, it can't be- And then in front, I think our only condition would have to be, it can't be 10 feet closer than 10, or eight and a half feet, closer than 10 feet from the sidewalk?
Yeah, for, from the, from the lot line, it makes an awful lot of sense, it's not a lot of line, with a parking, with a parking.
Parking starts.
Right, which is 10 feet, yeah, where the parking space starts and that's 10 feet.
And we may diminish the height, but if we have permission to go up to 10 feet up to that point, then we'll have our, the landscape architect make it as good as we can there.
Okay, and then the other, the other conditions that we talked about, just as a result of the D and P comments, would be, let's see, I know there's.
Recording a stormwater maintenance.
Yeah, starting from the bottom, that, another condition would be that the applicant submits to DPW for review and approval of a specific stormwater operation and management plan that would then have to be recorded with our decision. And that the site in its entirety complies with MUTCD standards, specifically the issue is the private parking sign, I guess. And there was one more. Oh, yes, just, just that, that you will, the applicant will have the tree protection approved by the city, that would be at the commencement of work, right?
Prior to commencement.
Prior, prior to demolition, right? Prior to demolition. So there was one more from the DPW, but.
There was just a question about why it was that way.
Didn't seem to be a condition. So did everybody get all that?
Yes, yes.
You have it, right?
Yes.
So would it be possible, well, first of all, are we, are we finished with any input from the applicant and the public? Anyone else have anything else they wanna say? Because once we close the public hearing, we can't take any input from anyone and we'll just continue.
I have one question.
Yes?
Do you know the height of the existing building that's gonna come down?
I'm gonna do it from memory, it is just over 10 feet. I don't know that it is quite 11 feet. And it does change a little bit along the length of the building.
But it's close.
It is very, it's. Eleven and a half. It's gonna be eleven and a half to 12. Ah, okay, that was my original number, but I decided I would add a little shit.
Any, any other questions or, or comments before we close the public hearing? Okay, so I guess a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor, that's unanimous, and now a motion on the application.
Now, I'll try that one. I'm. Sure. Thank you. On the application for a commercial finding for a nonconforming buffer and special permit for higher than a foot fence by ER and R. Cooper Partnership at 3 Main Florence, M.A. 2855, I move that we approve the application with the DPW conditions as noted in discussion moments ago, and with the change to the site plan for the 10-foot fence section being extended to the abutters' chimney, and it may go as close as 10 feet to the front lot line, other bits of fence to be negotiated within compliance. And before demolition, the tree protection must be inspected and approved by the city.
All in favor? Two unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Nice set of plans.
So just so you know, the, the planning board is, and with the council coming in at seven, so we can do that on the rail.
Maybe. And I need to, to get all this information out there.
Send me home. You're crazy.
Save me for five.
Anyway, you'll get.
I love the airplay.
Been a free, loser by now.
I have no interest.
I just, I had a dog very similar.
Peter, thank you. Thank you, sir.
You are welcome.
Glad it worked out.
Thank you.
She's got the second question.
Nothing to it, right? I do, thank you.
I am accusing myself, so here, use this on screen, that glow from the inside.
Sometimes it's the projector, I didn't.
No, 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 in a pinch, we can, Carolyn, in a pinch, we go to rooming. So, so what's happening is this, we have, we have this room for 12 more minutes. So, so we have the room for 12 minutes, I'm accusing myself because of a conflict and, and so I'm gonna get out of the way and someone else will take over for this last application for, on the agenda.
Good evening, I'm Joanne Campbell and I am the executive director of Valley Community Development Corporation, and I have come before you for a, a sign that is gonna be placed on what we're calling the lumberyard apartments at 256 Pleasant Street. And it's, the area that we've chosen for the sign is, so there's a, this is the front of the building at 256 Pleasant Street, and one part of the building is stepped back a little bit, so there's a, a wall here, and if you come up from the highway, you can see this wall and it's like a perfect place for a sign. So in your package, you would have received, we have the design that shows the, the lettering and the placement of the sign on that section of the wall. And it's aluminum letters, the reasoning for placing it here is, you know, we wanna make a special entry into the town, this is a great gateway area, the lumberyard, there's some history here, we've hopefully chosen a design that's attractive and we created the A to make it look like a railroad track to sort of bring in the industrial of the use of the railroad as well as calling the building the lumberyard because it's built in a lumberyard even though it's a brandy building, so we're trying to mix old and new together, and it's why building what's allowed in the zoning.
Thank you, just noting, we have opened a public hearing on the application. Kind of in the transfer of the, they mentioned that. Thank you. Describe the project, I don't see, we, we have no, we have no one else here. Does anyone have any questions?
I do not, I read your application, I saw the proposal, I thought it looked great, so I don't have any questions. And there are no staff concerned, right?
I had a question. So it's not lighted up?
There's no, there's no lighting.
No lighting.
Will be anchored into the letters or being, will be fabricated and will be anchored into the building, and we have had, you know, the architect approve, the, both the sign company and the installation company that, you know, the bricks are penetrable, it's not penetrating, you probably don't care about this, it's penetrating into the insulation of the building or anything, the anchors will go in, I think about an inch and a half into the brick, and the brick is very sturdy, it's brandy brick.
So I move that we close the public hearing. Okay, so moved.
Second.
Which one of you?
Okay, I second.
Kristen, okay.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, so the public hearing is closed and, but we are going to continue discussion, any discussion or interest in forming a motion?
You have to do a motion. I move that we approve the special permit for LA CDC for the sign that would be larger than that, right, at 256 Pleasant Street, M.I.P. 32C-171.
Can I just, just note that the building is owned by, I just wanna make sure that the permit is in the name of the new entity limited partnership, which we are part of, but because it's a tax credit deal, the owner of the building, it's on, it's on the application, just wanna make sure it gets in, the permit is in the name of.
Thank you.
Lumberyard North Hampton.
We put what's on the application.
But.
We put what's on the application.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. A second, thank you. All in favor?
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
It looks, it looks fantastic, it looks fantastic.
I think we have some meeting minutes. David reviewed minutes, he has no concerns regarding the meeting minutes of May 9.
I move that we approve those permits.
All in favor? Moved, that's approved, thank you, and to close the meeting.